Let's see, this is the Aspen City Council regular meeting from February 2-2-2-2. Tuesday, as a matter of fact. That's a call to order if we could have a roll call for attendance, please.
Counselor Joy?
Here.
Counselor Howes.
Here, too.
Counselor Heather.
Here as well.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
Mayor Torrey.
And I'm here. No scheduled public appearances this evening, which will bring us down to citizens' comments and petitions, an opportunity for members of the public to address counsel on items not scheduled for public hearing on our agenda. We'll remind you that you have about three minutes, and we are going to try to keep people to that. I'm looking in room first. Are there any members of the public in room tonight? No. Going to Web X. Are there any members of the public that are joining us here on Web X? Please unmute yourself and say hello. And just because I never know what's working and what's not, I'll say it again. Another call for citizen comment for anybody who's joining us via Web X this evening. All right, we'll close the public comment portion. Sarah, do you suspect that we will continue to take public comment via Web X as we start moving into post-pandemic?
That's the pleasure of the council for your rules and regulations.
That'll bring us down to council member and mayor comments. Council member comments this evening.
John?
I'll go. This was reported in the New York Times, Washington Post, and CNN last week that the West's mega drought is the worst in 1,200 years. The extreme dryness that's ravaged the West for more than two decades now ranks as the driest 22-year period in at least 1,200 years. Scientists have found this mega drought is being intensified by humanity's heating of the planet. Scientists pointed out that the flow of the Colorado River during the 2020 and 2021 water years shrank to the lowest two-year average in more than a century of record-keeping. Over the past year, it's to the United States, two largest reservoirs, Lake Mead and Lake Powell, declined to their lowest levels on record. The hot-dry years have taken a major toll on water supplies and landscapes throughout California and the West. California's reservoirs have dropped during the last two years. In Utah, the Great Salt Lake has declined to record-low levels. I think you get the idea. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Rachel?
Thank you, John. I only have a brief request afterwards, so I'll just tag on to your comment for a second. I was in Grand Junction last week for the Club 20 policy meetings, and we did have a water subcommittee update. So they were showing the graphs between the Lake Mead and Lake Powell and the equalization, how that's played out, and gave us some pretty extensive slides on the cuts that other communities are finally starting to take, you know, 500 acre feet in California here and there. So the divvying out is starting to get very short, but it is still really something of quite concern for all of us going forward. And the thing I wanted to kind of chime in is I'll occasionally hear the news, and they'll talk about the percent of normal that we're -- and it's like, there is no normal. There's an average. There's a 10-year average. But 10-year average is 10 abnormal years all averaged together. And that average changes every 10 years. It's a rolling average. So what might have been average snowpack 25 years ago is not the same average snowpack from 15 years ago or from five years ago. They do change it. So we're getting a percentage of a lower average, and so that's a bit scary for all of us as well. What I wanted to ask council to consider for scheduling going forward on our meeting of March 28, the Monday night, I'm wondering if we might be able to start it an hour early at 3:00. I think we have a fairly large comm dev policy meeting that evening. We do not have a meeting the following Tuesday because it's the fifth Tuesday of the month, and I am going to be flying out very early the next morning and driving to Denver that night after our Monday meeting. So if you, Sarah and Torrey, can take a look at it, see if it fits with other schedules, and if it'd be possible to start an hour early that day, that'd be great. If not, I'll make it one way or the other. Okay? So that's all for me today. Thank you.
Will you just say that date again for me? The 8th?
The 28th, the very last Monday of the month.
Oh, okay.
Of March. It's a work session day.
Okay. Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you.
Other council comments tonight?
A day late, I'd like to wish Martha Mattson a happy birthday. I happened to be over at her place yesterday and realized that she had her -- she's over 39, so we'll just leave it at that. But it was quite a treat because I saw a couple of people came in to wish her a happy birthday, one of whom I had not seen probably in 20 years, and it was just, it's nice. And so if you see Martha in the next few days, wish her a happy birthday. I'm celebrating the mask mandate being lifted. The incident rate is still above what we would like it to be. Above what we would like it to be, but the hospital is in the green, so be careful out there. It's, we're in the middle of what is projected to be a big snow cycle, but I'm always skeptical when they start talking about feet four days in advance. So I just hope that we get a good snow cycle. But it is slick underneath, so be careful out there and protect yourself at all times.
Skippy, comments tonight?
Yeah, 2-2-2-2. It's a lucky day. Just thought I'd just offer some gratitudes around the room. You know, like Ward said, mask mandate gone, feels awesome to see people's faces, but I wanted to just call out a big thank you to the people making these decisions. They're not easy decisions. The decision to go into the mandate was a really important one, and a lot of people didn't want that. The decision to come out, also an important one, and a lot of people didn't want that. So these aren't easy decisions, and I think we owe a debt of gratitude to the people making the difficult decision one way or the other. Bunch of city staff in the room. We're just doing great work, from childcare to transportation to housing to the environment. If you just landed here today, you might not even know there was a pandemic by how much stuff we've gotten done. Continue to get done. It's only possible because of you guys, so thank you to each and every one of you for working on behalf of our community. We got a bunch of snow coming down, which feels great in the ski town. I got to get out this morning and get a little shred in with Kaplan and Miracle, and I was just reminded that it's cool to live in a town where awesome people doing cool stuff can still ski really hard. And I had the opportunity to go to a little party at the art museum for the long weekend. I haven't been to a party in like two years, and it was just all local faces and hugs, and it just, you know, really reminded me of what this place is all about. So I'm feeling kind of all the Aspen gratitude today on this lucky day, and just wanted to share it with y'all.
You're glowing. Thanks, Skippy. A few quick comments. I always like to talk about things you could be doing that are better than being here. The first one would be retro films with the Aspen Historical Society that's going on at the Limelight here in Aspen. That starts at 5:30, so you can still get over there. Bill Gerber, the producer, is speaking at 6:00 PM at the ABC as part of the Colorado Mountain College series. And then hopefully we won't be here this late, but if it's 10:00 PM, Lucas Nelson is playing tonight at The Belly Up. And I don't think there's any more carbon dioxide leakage going on there, so it should be just fine to get back to The Belly Up. Lucas Nelson is tonight. But I want to talk about a couple other offerings that are going on here in Aspen. Tomorrow morning, 10:00 AM, a pre-K art class is free and open to the public, and that is at the Red Brick Center for the Arts. Speaking of kids, March 1st at the Wheeler Opera House is the Met Live, the Metropolitan, is Cinderella. And the reason I bring it up is because it's $5 tickets for kids, so a really affordable, great kids outing, Cinderella, March 1st at the Wheeler Opera House. Another great offerings at the Wheeler Opera House, March 4th and 5th, Dance Aspen is Back with Two Nights of Dance for the Community. Get out and support Dance Aspen, March 4th and 5th. Then the last thing I wanted to mention tonight is that our community did lose a community member recently, Jack Brenlinger, who was an Aspen Hall of Fame member as well, did a lot of things both with ski company, outside of ski company. His family is still here in the valley. And for me, I most knew him as the guy from the Tower Restaurant out in Snowmass, the magic shows in the Tower Restaurant out there. Jack was one of the proprietors there. So just wanted to make mention of, and thanks and appreciation to his family and Jack Brenlinger. Those are my comments this evening. That'll bring us down to agenda amendments. I didn't see any tonight.
I'm going to add to the executive session item, a discussion of the Aspen Board of Realtors versus City of Aspen case, 21-2021 CV 301131.
Thank you. So we have an executive session scheduled with a few items, and that will be added to those items for due public notice.
Correct. The executive session.
And that brings us to city managers' comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. A few quick things for you. First, I want to let you know that I've attended two airport advisory board meetings since the beginning of the year, and, or I should say, one I watched because one is when I was not available to be there. At this point, it's really background information, but the group will be setting priorities for the recommendations from the visioning process. There are 17 recommendations that have lots of sub-recommendations to them, and so the group will be prioritizing those for the staff at the airport and for the BOCC for consideration on implementation as its next step. That group I meet with monthly, and if you have any questions about the group or what they're up to, please feel free to reach out to me regarding that work.
I think you have a question.
Or it's really just a comment.
It's more, I'm getting it. Thank you. Really just a comment, but when I was on the Board of Commissioners and they were starting some of the work on the airport, some of the issues about capacity and growth, of course, came up, and we were assured by the consultants at that time that there was somewhat of a capacity limit based on demand, based on beds, based on the beds that the resort had and the type of demand it could have for Christmas week based on how many people you could accommodate. I think it'd be a good question to ask, how are they measuring that demand now that the questions of short-term rentals throughout the county are in flux, and we don't know how many beds we have? We might have the number of beds we always thought we had, we might have twice as many, and how does that play into their capacity and growth calculations? Thank you.
And I would offer that the focus right now has been more on the physical limitations of the space as the growth control mechanism more than the capacity. Thanks. So for example, as the CRJ 700s are ending their end-of-life, the Springs Airport paving and marking project will start include spacings for another type of aircraft that's still with under the 90-foot wingspan in order to anticipate at least the commercial aviation's needs for gate parking. The, I think there's a lot on the general aviation side that might be a bit of a mystery to our community, so I think you'll anticipate hearing me advocate for sort of pulling the cover back a little bit.
Yep.
So that the community who perhaps doesn't utilize general aviation services can have a better understanding of how it operates and how that also influences the design of the amenities at the airport.
Thank you. Thank you for that update and taking those questions forward at the right time.
I had a comment about the airport and about greenhouse gas, about the distribution of greenhouse gases from the different type of aircraft. At general aviation, the smaller private jets account for 81% and commercial operations 19%. So that's a, that was a real eye-opener for me that those general aviation planes are really polluting.
Right, the committee has already had some advocacy, we don't say, call it a discussion, but some advocacy also of alternative fuels to help address some of that, and, you know, airplanes that could potentially accept those fuels, and how does that affect the FBO, the operator of those pieces of equipment that deliver fuel and other sources that are private contracts at the airport? If you would like a more detailed update, perhaps we should schedule it for a work session?
At some point, I think it'd be valuable.
At some point, yeah. Thanks for getting back to us with that, though.
Yeah.
All right, then just a few other things. I wanted to give a shout out to our staff who had to work this weekend. They had a number of unusual situations that they had to deal with. Only one arose to the level I felt you needed to know about it. I was not going to text you in the middle of the night about the Belly Up evacuation. I figured you would sleep okay not knowing till the morning. But that, being on standby while we weren't sure exactly the extent of the issues at the airport, things like that. So really, really appreciative of those teams who stepped it up, along with a few other things that occurred. Then I just need some housekeeping, some housekeeping things for tonight's executive session and for tomorrow, just for the council's benefit and for the public's benefit. When the council goes into an executive session, that roll call and that vote needs to occur in this room so that it is properly recorded for the general public. After that is when you leave to enter your new executive session room, the electric pass room downstairs. We have the appropriate recording equipment in there to ensure that we comply with all of the requirements for maintaining records of your executive session discussions. If you are not taking any action, they should be able to adjourn from downstairs.
I think that would be appropriate. It would be up to council.
Right. Yeah, you're right, sorry.
I'm sorry. I think that would be appropriate. It would be up to council as to whether you actually wanted to come up here. I would not, I do not think it's necessary. I think you can take, adjourn the meeting from downstairs. If anybody wishes is available and wishes to come downstairs and watch the adjournment, we can let them in down there.
I was going to say, at least that way, similar to the old building, we were able to let grassroots go home early rather than wait an hour for us to come out of our executive session just for the sign-off. It's the purpose. Thank you.
So just so you're aware, but our recommendation is when you go into executive session, as much as we can, that be recorded and broadcast from this room for the community benefit. I said when they go into executive session for the community's benefit, it is best for that to occur in this room.
Yes, absolutely. The vote needs to be taken, I agree.
Yes.
On grassroots, and then the executive session is declared, and we can adjourn to downstairs. I agree.
Clearly, we didn't talk ahead of time.
Are you really good at this?
And then the other thing is just with that is some clarification for your special meetings that are only for the purposes of executive session. We need some guidance on your expectations with grassroots in those situations, so like, for example, tomorrow night, whether they should be on present for those opening votes when the meeting's purpose is solely for an executive session. So that would be a process question. I need some direction from the council on so that we can, we can let Amy know whether she needs to work tomorrow night or not.
Did we add an item to tomorrow's agenda?
Tomorrow's agenda is only an executive session.
Okay.
Unless the council's planning on taking action after the executive session.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Your Honor, if it's possible for us to avoid having to have grassroots here, I don't see the need to start and then just go into executive session. So procedurally, if we can just go into executive session without grassroots, that's preferable to me.
Same.
Thank you. Amy, did you hear that? All right.
You know, and if it's possible, if one of our local reporters are around to watch us go into executive session, but there will be a record kept. But I agree with not having grassroots. Thank you.
Amy's got plans tomorrow.
That's all for my comments. Is there any questions for me this evening?
Thanks, Sarah. Board reports. Any quick board report updates for today? Start down this end. John?
Yeah, I went down to Denver last week for a CML conference, and forgive me if this is a bit out of order, but let's see, we talked a lot about collective bargaining, and mayor of Denver actually came for an opening speech, and he pointed out that Denver has rejected collective bargaining five times. Basically, CML's position is that it's a bad idea and that we should be in charge of making our own decisions, which I can agree with. What else? There's a bill to encourage employees to offer transportation incentives and contributions for employees. I supported that. Also, some recycling measures have been proposed, centralized location, ideally in Denver, where our recycling could be taken and recycled, because currently it all goes out of state. Also, in a smaller meeting, we found out that Montrose already has a piece of land that they're proposing to be used as a recycling center, and I was asked if we would support that, and I said, of course, you know, any place that's closer than where we're shipping it now would be a better solution. There's also a sustainability initiative that's going to require companies to pay for statewide programs and recycling, and it'll provide money to local governments for those recycling programs. What else? I think that's about it, except also statewide energy codes such as net zero are on the horizon. So that gave me hope as well.
Thanks, John.
Any boards? Ward? Yeah, briefly, we had a CCLC meeting, and it was really brief, but we did get to a discussion about CCLC's interest in being involved with the Armory and groups that may be there. They have a good, I think, a really outstanding protocol and gauging mechanism for who gets into the Saturday market, and I was thinking that that could be a model for future use of the Army at some point. They're also interested in being more involved in the mall activation and the street pedestrian, Galena Street Cooper. Galena Street, Cooper Street, ped bike discussions as well. So, CCLC is it, I know that the mayor has asked for them to become more engaged and they're willing to do that. They're looking for other things to get engaged in. And then we had a core board meeting. We were briefed for, I think, close to an hour about the airport. And that interesting, 81, 19% was just jumped out at me for.
Obvious reasons.
Yeah. And they're talking about electrifying as much as possible, ground operations, but air operations are not anywhere close to becoming electrified. They have talked about, there's an ADU, or APU, accessory power unit in the tail of these aircraft and that runs diesel fuel. And there was some discussion about maybe having electric generators to run as they're waiting in line for takeoff to investigate that. So, they're they are conscious about greenhouse gas and the environment as they're going forward. Also, some discussions with APCHA about perhaps battery usage and storage. New bylaws were adopted. And that's about it for boards and commissions for me. Thanks, Ward.
Yeah, thank you. The only thing I really had done.
Hi, Rachel.
Thank you. Yeah. These little buttons. I was attending the Club 20 policy meetings in Grand Junction last week on Thursday and Friday. They were a little bit collapsed because they were doing them all in one two-day session rather than two two-day sessions as they have in the past. I give a larger report when we get back to a real board report thing so I don't take too much time. But some of the topics that are dominating are the just transition with coal communities that are seeing their power plants change, but they had said the five remaining plants have, excuse me, coal mines have produced more coal than ever and are seeing more demand for other places, but the Colorado plants are slowly closing. Wolf introduction has been a major topic with people being concerned about their cattle and their families and particularly now that some of the other states are seeing the endangered species status restored and it's not restored to the Colorado wolves, but they don't know what that means. So, it's just a change of rules from state introduction to federal management introduction. So, quite a good concern there. Naturally, water and water issues took a lot of the meeting and the concerns about that, the concerns of, again, West Slope dryup. And there's a bill that's floating around and I'll be frank, I don't know what's the best way to approach it. There might be some amendments, but on anti-speculation and water. And there's getting to be a lot of concern of people buying all of the fruit orchards of Grand Mesa County and and these sort of areas and speculating in the water use in the future. I'd hate to see something like that, you know, because if they were sold to the front range, the diversion point is the headwater communities like us. So, instead of that water right flowing westward, some of it would start to flow eastward even more so. So, we're keeping a good eye on that and I still will put out that date for everyone to consider if they can make it, March 24th and 25th. And that's going to be the major West Slope gathering of Club 20 that is going to be the watersheds, you know, and the health of our watersheds and forests and how to deal with the fire danger that just is is getting worse every year. And so, that's my plea to our public to really think about dispensable space around your house. And dispensable space isn't just not storing your firewood under the eaves to keep it dry. It's also making sure there's enough room for the fire trucks to actually get in there if they're going to be trying to save your house. And the most important thing, I guess I felt out of the meeting was they have a process of renewing their older resolutions about every five or seven years, depending on how behind they get, and updating them or mending them, combining them down. And so, there was a resolution on private property rights and takings that was getting ready to be renewed. I'm pretty sure I voted against it the first time many years ago, but I was able to get it tabled and put back to committee to take a look at because they kind of have this premise that if there's any diminution of value, any change that someone might have to comply with a zoning law or see their property zoned differently, it means that there should be a government payout of some sort and that it's a taking and that is not land use and planning principles. And I was able to make that case and see it sent back to committee rather than just removed. So, that was the Club 20 week. And there you go.
That's great.
Thank you.
Good work. Skippy?
Yes. Two things. So, Nordic Council meeting. So, I mentioned that Craig had been sort of, he left the board and was retained to begin to study potential snowmaking and he is just sort of beginning that work. And so, at the next meeting, we should expect more more of that. And just kind of the brief conversation around that was should other sites other than the initial two, which are the golf course and the Five Trees area be considered? Should something like Ashcroft be considered, for instance? Questions were raised around city snow removal. You know, there's already a bunch of snow that gets kind of thrown out somewhere and is any of that usable? Could it be cleaned? Apparently, in Austria, they do have a process for sort of cleaning snow that Craig saw, so he was going to look into that. And then also talked about T-Lazie Seven as a potential partner because I guess some private contractors or homes use that as a dump site. They pay them to dump the snow there. So, those are just some things that came up. And then APCHA board meeting. We, the board looked at the lumberyard proposal and looked at BG3. Let's see here. I would say there was a variety of opinions on on the lumberyard, just kind of looking for things that stood out as kind of clear consensus, I guess. The things that came out, you know, Kelly made the comment about having more collaboration around a master plan. You know, John made some comments about not having parking and Allison and Carson suggested that the opposite was the case, that we needed that parking. We talked about sort of the balance, and I think everyone thought that in general it's unbalanced and they also appreciated our take that the aesthetics need some additional work. Berlin Game Three, we did ask Ward to your question about starting that as the place for right sizing. There was some support on the board for that. Others felt that while that might be a good thing, they'd rather see a blanket policy, not just the BG3 policy around right sizing. And Allison did raise some of the concerns that we would have in that, which are that, you know, people who are, you know, most in need by the data are those kind of one and two bedrooms and it would make it more difficult for them to compete for that resource. Think those were really the the overall comments. And there was a few abstentions on that question as well. Other things, no, those are my notes. Yeah, those are the broad strokes.
That last one a little bit, and I appreciate that because I had zoomed in from the hotel in Grand Junction, so I think Skippy got better notes on that than I did, for sure. But just to the the issue of downsizing, we all and right sizing, however you'd like to say it, there's a lot of complicating factors. The seniors who may want to downsize maybe a category five type of income and the unit that is now available is a category two. Do you just say, that's okay, we've lost the space for a category two worker, we're just letting that now be a category five unit for those people? And the type of things that people need to want to make the move, what are they? And we're looking to a survey and some more specific questions. I think Allison is adding a great deal to the board, really reminding people this isn't about seniors perhaps needing to downsize because their life circumstances have changed. It could just as easily be a divorce situation or someone who no longer leads as many bedrooms. So, putting together the different components of what someone wants to be able to make that move. Do you do you want to have help packing and moving 40 years' worth of possessions? Do you need income assistance? Will you need to get a new bank loan? Will you be at lower monthly payments then or higher monthly payments by moving into this new location? These are the type of things. And if you're really talking about moving from ownership to rental, are there the type of guarantees that they will never lose that rental unit or that it will always remain affordable? So, we're talking even about looking at a matrix of the types of needs that may exist in that in that realm to be able to really facilitate and both incentivize and then maybe in the future find ways to disincentivize the occupancy issues. Thank you.
And I'm so glad you said that because you reminded me, we didn't just talk about right sizing as relates to BG3. That was sort of the meat of the discussion. So, we also had our first discussion and we got a review of sort of the history of right sizing and polluting the Housing Frontiers Group, some studies that were done before that. We looked at that data, which actually was surprising in a good way, at least to me. There was something like 218, if I remember just quite right, 218, that were surveyed who had, you know, bedrooms to spare. And more than a quarter said that they would be interested in some form of incentive. And then when they broke it down into specific things, the right to have a dog, a bigger whatever, that number rose to somewhere in the 40 to 45% space. So, that was good. And the overall direction that was given to staff was sort of, you know, keep it simple, stupid. Start with the things that are easy. We know there's a lot of complication here, but a result of of more than zero is a positive result. And so, you know, what are the the simple solutions that we can apply just to see if there will be any takers and then move down sort of that whole of complexity only as is needed. But it's it was great to see, you know, actual action being taken on this piece.
Yeah, and it's, again, to elaborate, I think, was it Allison who said, can we do a cost benefit analysis? And I think that trying to do something like that, even if it's just ranges, is really important because the, you know, literally thrown out, well, what if what if it costs you $500,000 to build a unit? Why not give someone $500,000 to move and you get more bedrooms back or, you know, just roughly along those lines? And it becomes, well, wait a second, you could pay that $500,000 to get someone to move or $100,000 or some number, but that unit that you just freed up might very well be won by a single parent with two children and you're really only going to have one more worker out of the three-bedroom. Is that what you wanted? Or you could pay a lot of money to try to incentivize that move and then still have that unit sold to someone who's fully qualified and it'd be within their right that they're within 12 years of their retirement. And so, you know, you really have to look at the pros and cons of it and particularly when you're talking about money to be the grease to make it happen that would be coming out of production or other areas, what is the cost benefit? And so, there's a lot of questions to be answered there and we're just going to keep working on it. Thank you.
Tori, if I may, for the public, this is something that I shared with an idea I shared with council for a work session that we had on BG3. And we never got to that on our agenda, so it's never been discussed in public. But I didn't want to open a can of worms here, but I know I've been looking at this when I served on Housing Frontiers probably.
Decade.
Eight years ago. I know that APCHA has been looking at this for a long time and I was hopeful that we could gain some bedrooms in a new situation where we don't. My frustration was, as Rachel brings up, all of these objections and all these barriers but I like Skippy's comment, kiss, keep it as simple as possible, but the whole idea is if they're vacant rooms, they're under utilized assets. And if we can gain some vacant rooms by having people with whose housing situations and needs have changed to move into a smaller unit with some kind of incentive. And I know there are a lot of objections and a lot of things to look at, but I think it's 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 worth. I just thought Berlin Game Three selection was a good place to start before it gets into all the confusion and all of the.
Agreed.
Objections that have held us up back for eight or 10 years that this has been discussed and we're nowhere with it.
Yes.
So, I was just, and I shared it with council and Skippy did bring it up at APCHA, but it's been discussed at APCHA for a long time. So, I'm just trying to find ways to free up bedrooms without having to build them all. And a bedroom that we can gain that we don't have to build is it's a it's a gain for the community. So, just just for the public to know what we're talking about, we haven't discussed that here. And I think when we get back to that discussion that was on the work session for BG3 is where we can explore that a bit. Skippy, I appreciate you bringing it up and, you know, obviously, Rachel, there are a lot of objections and barriers, but I'd like to find a way to make it happen instead of a way why it can't happen.
We're trying to do it now.
Thank you. Sarah?
Members of council, I just want to make sure you're aware, Councilmember Richardson's comments remind me of this and about the wolf introduction, reintroduction conversation happening throughout the state. Chris Lane, the executive director of ACES, and I had a pretty valuable conversation. And this this happened, you know, before the holidays. But anyways, I requested ACES help facilitate that conversation in the community as our local experts much better than ourselves when the state was seeking input from local jurisdictions, given the fact that our cattle ranching is very limited. Our issues are probably more domestic pets and general wildlife concerns from reintroduction. And so, they were very graceful at ACES to take that on and are participating. So, if you need additional information on that, please let me know and I can point you towards the specific staff member at ACES who's been helping us with that. Thank you.
Oh.
Any other board reports? My only board report this evening is this morning's Acra retreat, four and a half hours. We did two major topics. One was Destination Think, that's the Destination Management Group that has been enlisted by Acra to help with some of the planning efforts. We went over their proposal and plans. All that will be coming to City Council. Acra will be here in less than a month, about three weeks or so, to update us on all that. The second part of the meeting was a policy discussion. So, we went around different workstations, to call them that, on housing, workforce availability, transportation, so a lot of kind of community issues, not Acra or business, but from their lens and several different lens, actually, we were assigned business owners, employees and visitors kind of lenses to look at these through. And we just discussed Acra policy statements as they will be moving forward. Again, all that's going to come to this council in a in a presentation.
I understand Acra recently did, or maybe is doing, a survey that housing is a big piece of, that talks specifically to employers as well as to employees. Is that part of what we're going to get?
Yes.
Cool.
And I can send you the preliminary on that. They've sent it out.
Yeah.
It is actually interesting.
That's what I've heard.
It's actually, you know, a lot of times with with surveys, it's the same questions being asked over and over, but sometimes asking them slightly differently gets you maybe some more insight into different areas. So, that's what I found with this is that it actually is interesting and I'll send it over to you.
Thank you.
Tori, is I had heard that one of the potential requests from APCHA, excuse me, of Acra or its members is that business owners start to be able to buy the affordable housing units and go into the lotteries and be able to have owner-controlled units created by APCHA and the city. Is that part of what's coming up?
Not of not a request. That is what we talked about. I don't know that the feedback today on that is a policy direction. I don't know if that one's going to make it through.
Okay.
The sifter, but but yes, that has been that that was shared. At the same time, I would say, Rachel, that people are very aware that there are some difficulties with that and some pitfalls that they are concerned about, job attached housing and, you know, the separations that can happen there in a valley where people, I, you know. can happen there in a valley where people, you know, do change jobs, you know?
Yeah.
There's some concern about that. And it's recognized. But yes, the overall sentiment was that they are interested. Businesses recognize that the housing shortage is something that impacts them directly. And so they would vote with their dollar in order to get involved.
Okay, so we're kind of seeing that 20 years of worth of being able to invest in Basalt or Eljabel or somewhere for private sector businesses hasn't happened. And now
Enough.
Enough, to the extent that we're going to start potentially adding the competition of employers against the people who already are losing dozens and dozens of lotteries to try to get their housing. And they're talking about paying the entire full subsidy that the community has put into these units?
It hasn't gotten that far.
Okay.
It was literally a sentence statement that talked about that as an issue, but didn't get any further than that.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate you knowing about it.
Don't know enough about it, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, that conversation is scheduled for a work session on March 15th.
15th.
We have not rescheduled BG3. We're trying to work through some calendaring.
Okay. Those are board reports for this evening. That brings us down to the consent calendar tonight. The consent calendar includes Resolution 16, concrete replacement and pedestrian improvements, contract approval. Resolution 19, solid waste and recycling contract for the City of Aspen, City of Aspen facilities. Resolution 20, contract for interpretive, exhibit fabrication, and mobile website production for Rio Grande Park. Resolution 22, this is our detox intergovernmental agreement. Resolution 23, policy resolution on city buildings. Resolution 25, Picken County IGA for the armory building. Resolution 26, kids-first childcare nurse consultant contract. Resolution 30, termination of emergency declaration, and the draft minutes of February 8th. Items to be polled. I'll start with John.
I was going to ask to poll any items?
I'll go to Ward then.
I'd like to poll for comment, Resolution 20 and Resolution 30.
Any others, 20 and 30?
I'd like to poll 23 and 30.
I'd like to poll 23 and 30.
All right, 23. Any for you, Skippy?
All of them. No, I'm just pulling your chain. I don't need to pull any.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and, let's go ahead and go through these then and we'll take them all in one motion. Let's start with Resolution 20 as if we can. Ward wanted to pull this for some, just conversation, I believe.
Yeah, it's
Come on up if you guys will. We want to recognize you for the work that you're doing as well.
Welcome.
For me, this is too important and beautiful of a project just to pass on without bringing some recognition to the amount of work that has been done on this. How long it's been going on and what the end result is. I'm so appreciative of all the staff that's been involved in this and with Annie Denver and Jeff Woods, how long it's taken. When I first saw this come before, Council, I don't remember how long ago it was, but I was excited about it. And I'm even more excited about it now. So I just wanted to bring some attention to it because I'm so appreciative of it. And it's going to make such a difference in this area around the park and the John Denver Sanctuary.
Thank you.
That's great to hear. Thank you so much.
I do want to comment, though. There's been a number of folks who've carried the torch on this project. It is a long project. It was delayed a bit from COVID and some other incidental things. And we're really excited for this to come to fruition. So appreciate you commenting and
I'm doffing my hat. Shep, oh, thank you much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. And just real quick, mine are really brief. You know, normally I have a distaste for this kind of stuff. But putting interpretives in the nature sometimes detracts from it for me. But I found these to be really great. I most especially love the history references. I think that is so important for our community and for our visitors to understand the history that we try so hard to carry forward. And also the environmental, some of the environmental information as well. So I just want to say kudos to you as well. Ward actually brought this to my attention earlier today and was like, hey, this is really exciting. And I was like, yeah, you know, I guess you're right on this one. You know, it is exciting. So I just want to say great job to you as well.
Yeah, that's what I heard, too.
Yeah. And Rachel?
I also think it's just great. I'm really excited. And just adding a really, really small footnote, I first moved into Aspen in the summer of 88. I was living in Aspen Village in Woody Creek before. And they were having the first Art Park Work Day down there. And I came down and met so many people who later became great friends. But in particularly, Al Blumquist was taking the wheelbarrow full of gravel that they wanted for the entry to the tent area down to the river and started creating his own river trail. And he said, there has to be a river trail here. And so before it became the John Denver Park, it was the Art Park. I just want to make sure if possible, there's some remembrance of Al Blumquist that you guys think about there. Because he's the one who said there has to be a river trail there. And he just started building it while everyone else was building the regular design that had come across with Kent Reed and the Art Park. So thank you so much. It really meant a lot.
That's a great story. Thanks.
Got John there.
John? I'll comment, too. I really like those old photos of the way the rail yard was set up. And I really appreciate the references to the rail. I've been here long enough to remember when it was an industrial wasteland down there. Cap Sato and the rest was pretty much a mess. So thanks.
Appreciate it. I'd be remiss if I didn't comment that we had a great team. Conservation by Design, who's the contractor that you're approving with this, they've been really great to work with. We've also had some other people in the community who've contributed to the content. So it's been a really great community effort.
Awesome.
Yeah, I feel a little guilty accepting all the praise. I'm really here to see it through the finish line. But a lot of people have carried that torch for a long time to get us to where we are. And, you know, Mayor Tori, I hear what you're saying about signage. And that site has a really important story to tell. And I think this approach very tactfully and gracefully tells that story.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
You need to clap into the microphone, guys, to make sure it works.
That'll bring us to Resolution 23. This is the policy resolution on the city buildings. This was also updated this afternoon in our packet, just some problems posting some of the information. So if you haven't seen an updated version, you have an updated version now in your Dropbox and such.
I think I opened the amended packet for this comment. And it's really, just calling your attention to item number three. The armory will house both ACRA primary visitor and office space and as much community space use as possible. I was just wondering whether we wanted to put some sort of limitation or square footage or concept on that ACRA space since this is a guiding policy document. It was at one of our prior meetings where someone brought up that, hey, they used to have 200 square feet of office space and now they're asking for 4,000. What do they really need? And this, to me, makes it sound like community space is just the leftover and that it is kind of secondary. It's just maybe it's how it's written, that it's secondary to me to how ACRA offices and business offices that don't need a public space. And it's nice to have them co-located together, but it's really not the same needing it in the downtown core that perhaps community uses are. So I just, it just doesn't have the priority for community uses the way I thought we were thinking about it. And I just, that's all.
I appreciate that. Sarah, do you want to comment to that at all? I'll add a little to it. I actually spoke with ACRRA today and at the meeting about this and their square footage. They really are, they haven't sharpened their pencil yet. They don't know where they're at.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Should we sharpen our policy?
Yeah, I understand. Sarah, what do you think? I mean, it's a little bit of language that she's really talking about here.
It's certainly the council's pleasure if you'd like to put a cap on that. You know, my conversations with Debbie indicate they're likely to ask for less than what the facilities study, which is our guiding document adopted by the previous council. They're likely to request less because the community space available in the room could assist in meeting some of their needs as well. So shared use. Yeah, so like the sister cities room, being able to accommodate board meetings of up to 30 or 40 people would be of value to them. But we're so early on in this process. I don't know that we could advise you on what the right number is. We would revert back to that previously adopted guidance document at this point.
So I think, I think what's troubling
I was going to just flip the sentence.
What's troubling here is as much community use as possible. Because
Yeah, well, if you flip the sentence entirely and say the armory will have as much community use as possible and the ACRA primary visitor and office space, you know, you just flip it so the community use is the first thing in the sentence, as much community use as possible, and then the ACRA two are a little more secondary to that.
What, it's, we're benign to it. So if someone wants to propose a motion, we're happy to make the amendments.
Council, does that better, Council, capture what?
And Ward, I
I'd second that if it was a motion.
Is that, would that be?
Does that make sense?
No.
Yes. Yeah, I, as much as possible for community use. And I think that there's a lot of discussion to follow and things to nail down.
Okay, I would make a motion to change the wording of item number three on
They just, you need to just poll this and not vote on it when you vote in consent and then come back and make the motion separate. You can't do this in the middle of the Senate.
Yeah, we'll do the amendment in the motion.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you, Jen.
Okay, thanks, Jen.
I thought we were talking about them individually. I forgot. We were doing it big group. Go ahead.
And I was going to say to Council, because this did have a difficulty posting the memo, and I didn't know if everybody saw it, I just wanted to make sure that everybody did go through this. You know, this is Sarah and staff's attempt to really make sure that we're on the same page and clarify. I have to say that I, what I see here, Sarah, reflects our discussions. There were no items in here that I was like, no, that I don't think that captured it. I think you captured it correctly here. So, but does everybody else feel the same?
I agree.
All right. Okay. And then Rachel, we'll make an amended motion on that one.
Great.
Okay. That'll bring us down to item 30. Ward wanted to pull this. This is termination of emergency declaration.
Yeah, this is another one that I didn't want to let go just as a consent calendar, yes. 712 days that we've been in an emergency. And it's been very stressful for a lot of staff members and has put a lot of extra weight on the shoulders of many, and Sarah in particular. And I didn't want to let this go without acknowledgement of what a significant event this has been and to celebrate coming out of this emergency. And I know that a number of items, a lot of capital expenditures were held up. And it was a lot of work for a lot of people. And the city was able to maintain the basic essential services at a very high level. We were able to react to business needs with activations. But I am so happy that we're out of it. And I'm so happy that I'm seeing faces and noses and that to exit this emergency. I just wanted to pay homage to all of the people on staff that put so much into this. And I deserve our thanks. So thank you all.
Eighteen days shy of two years.
Yeah.
Eighteen days shy of two years. I mean, it's just kind of astounding to think about.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ward.
I also had put down to poll item number 30. And so I'd like to make a comment as well. And I would certainly second and ditto all that Ward has said. I think it's very accurate and true. I am going to quote something I heard from the Board of Health meeting as they were making this decision to say, let's be kind to each other. And if someone is continuing to wear a mask for whatever reasons they've chosen to, that respect that. They're not trying to make a statement to you or about you or anything else. It's worth noting, I'm wearing a mask. I just came back from Grand Junction and as in meetings and listened to the radio on my way to my meeting on Friday morning to hear that Mesa County had 96 new cases from the day before. And they had 30 people hospitalized. So, you know, it's still out there. You still can get it. And it can still cause you problems. And we want to be very respectful of people who are trying to protect their health or protect their family's health. The one thing I wanted to ask, though, as I was walking over here after work, we're no longer doing the COVID testing behind city halls. Is that accurate? There was no testing kiosk anymore?
I'm going to let Jen and Scott discuss this. This is in relation to some changes that you might notice in the IGA with Picken County for use of the armory.
Okay, thank you. And then mostly, where is the replacement COVID testing? Or are we just going to stop that now?
So the replacement COVID testing is going to be in what was the quality control room in the armory. So it will have the doorway at Hopkins Avenue.
Okay.
And that, I think, actually is in now.
It's there. That lease will be before you at the next council meeting.
The IGA is on tonight's agenda.
Yeah, but that's not part of this IGA because it was negotiated after this IGA was negotiated.
Oh, my apologies. I thought it was all in one.
And so what is the signage? I mean, I literally walked right around the building without seeing anything to say where to get a COVID test.
We can give Picken County your feedback that you would like them to put additional signage. But that is their facility with a private contractor to run. It's not a city facility. Our signage was limited to directing patrons to not enter the building.
Right. And I understand maybe it's Picken County's responsibility, but we still have a sign on our front door, we did at least Friday, that says, no, we're not testing in this city hall. Go to the old city hall. How do we really get the word out to people? I mean, that's what I'm wondering, you know? Because I think there's still a need for testing and to have the public well aware that there's testing. And we were at least partners in that testing with the location before. So I'd just like to know how we're getting the word back out to people.
Actually, Rachel, I don't know. So I can find out and get back to you.
And the deputy county manager has been monitoring your meeting tonight. So I'm sure he can go in and take that back tonight.
Okay, so it's now county responsibility and we're out of it.
I can't speak to their hours or their operating agreement or any of those kinds of things that would be important information in those signs. So it's really important that they take the lead in making sure they're accurate. The address for the testing remains 130 South Galena Street. So the address we publish has not been changed with this choice.
When we negotiated the IGA for the court use, which is on tonight, we really wanted the county to control the site. And they control the parking, the testing. And, but the space for the testing is a separate lease that will be before you the next meeting. And we'll come back with some signage and logistics suggestions.
Thank you.
And Rich is listening in and such. And Rachel, when I was past there, they had a sandwich board on the sidewalk. They had a lot of signage when I went past. But it was also kind of worn. I think they might be replacing it and updating it because it was kind of worn out. So I think their goal is to have the proper signage. It is still listed as a testing site. And Rich is right there. So hi, Rich.
Thanks. I just don't want, you know, us to fall through the cracks for a few days at all. Thank you.
Rich, if you have anything to add, you're welcome to, or say hello.
Hi, Don. Well, thank you, Councilmembers and Mayor. I'll certainly work with Scott. We'll get in touch tomorrow and talk this through. But I've listened to the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Nice effect, Amy.
I love when it goes on Matrix numbers.
All right, thank you guys so much for that. And that'll, that'll do, I actually do have one other question. I guess Trish, maybe I would love to talk to you real quickly about 16. And mostly, I'm talking about the Cooper and Spring intersection. We did the test out there with the bollards and the flower boxes and such like that. And I think it was a great success. We want to keep it. We want to move forward with it. My question to you is, instead of putting the bollards back is, instead of putting the bollards back and doing the kind of setup that we had last summer, we're moving to permanent installation of the bulb outs and such, and are we doing that because that's a better solution going forward, or are we doing that just because it's processed and we did the test and the test was good, so we're gonna make it permanent? I, I, I'm just asking for your input, like, are there, are there other things that maybe we'd want to be doing and not, that, that's all, I'm just asking you from your department kind of perspective, is this the right time for this?
So the, the test was a, a summer test, and we were only able to do that during the summer, and it was very successful, but as you know, it's, we don't only get pedestrians in the summer, and we don't only have bikes in the summer, and we don't only have safety issues in the summer.
Yeah.
So this is to make it a year-round improvement to that intersection.
Yeah, that, and that's what I wanted to know, I mean, because those bollards, I thought were effective, visually very effective, so a bulbed-out curb and, and new striping and painting and stuff will, will be able to be that effective in the winter time as well?
Correct.
Okay, John?
I just had a quick question, that's the second most dangerous intersection in town, I was wondering which is the, the most dangerous intersection in town?
Yeah, I believe it is.
Okay, that makes perfect sense, thank you.
Thank you, that's all, I just wanted to check in with you guys. All right, we can take a motion for the consent calendar.
I would move to approve the consent calendar.
I would move to approve the consent calendar with item number resolution twenty-three, series of twenty-twenty-two, item number three, on that resolution, to have the language flipped as discussed in the meeting to emphasize community use.
Correct. What needs to happen is that, that resolution needs to be fully approved, and you vote on the remaining consent calendar items, and then bring back a separate motion for approval of resolution twenty-three, thank you.
We'll do that right now. Rachel?
I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar other than resolution number twenty-three.
I'll second.
We have, we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote for the consent calendar, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three with an amendment to change item three within that resolution to reverse the language and make community use the first priority in the sentence.
I'll second that motion.
Does that make sense? We have a motion in a second, any further discussion, seeing none, could we have a roll call vote for ordinance number twenty, I mean, resolution number twenty-three, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
See.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes. All right, consent calendar passes, thank you guys so much, bye. No notice of call-up this evening, no first readings of ordinance this evening, no public carings, that brings us to action items, tonight's first action item is a proposal to create a regional housing coalition letter of intent invitation to participate. We have Diane, who's gonna be presenting on this, and I guess, I'll save my comments.
You can start, you're the mayor.
Okay, my comment is, while this is not a lot of money, and it is a goal that we are looking to forward, it may not be fully baked here yet, so I would just say to council members, let's get our questions out on the table if we have some, but it is not necessary for approval of this tonight, and if we do not approve this tonight, it does not mean that we are not for regional housing coalition planning, it just means that we might feel that it still needs a little bit of work to get ready to go.
Can you expand on that?
After.
Great.
Presentation first.
Okay, I won't do that again. Just, before I start, I would be remiss as, as a member of the APSHA team if I did not mention that all of the board discussion on, on downsizing is voluntary and incentivized downsizing, and the board actually had a great discussion, and they, multiple people commented on how important that was to them.
Thank you.
So with that, before you is a letter of intent, as such a letter of intent, and I will use some of what the mayor said, it's, it's actually not intended to be fully baked, it's, it's much like the going around to the colonies and saying, getting something that everyone could agree on, so while this actually initially started as a memorandum of understanding and much more complex and specified, what changed over the course of the discussions on this, and as you saw in the memo, right, this was a, this was an effort started by a lot of folks who are involved in, in local housing authorities, and then it, and then a parallel effort started last year with fu, funding from DOLA on regional collaboration, and after a number of stakeholder meetings, the most important topic to everyone in the community was workforce resiliency, and the focus that we got from the stakeholders was really on affordable housing and workforce housing, both of those topics. So what is before you, and one of the things that changed, initially it was going to be set up as some type of intergovernmental agency, and what changed was the idea of moving this towards a nonprofit, in your packet, you'll see there are a number of benefits to having a nonprofit, I've had experience in a jurisdiction that had a very active nonprofit along with active governments, and specifically in Colorado, because Tabor prevents local governments for, from applying for some funds, a, a local nonprofit can have that ability. There are also some advocacy advantages of also having a nonprofit, so this letter of intent was, it, as I mentioned, it, it actually morphed a lot and then became focused on standing up a nonprofit, this was passed last Thursday by Glenwood, and then earlier today by Picken County, that obviously, and what the mayor said, I, I will support that, it is, it is not, you know, whatever message the council, council would like to send, I'm happy to take back, I am the representative from both the city and APSHA that's working on this, and I think one of the fundamental questions that kind of Sarah and I were talking through today is, do you want staff to spend time on this, right, this is in your strategic, your draft affordable housing strategic plan, however, it is, it is staff time and energy, and with that, I will hand it back to the mayor.
Yep.
Just a, a clarifying question, Diane, you mentioned that Glenwood and the county passed this, do you mean they passed this exact letter, and does it matter that all the jurisdictions, so to speak, passed the exact same letter?
That, that is absolutely, to overuse the word intent, that is the intent, and on the last page of your, of this report in the packet, it actually shows the signatories, so that's been the, and, and I will say, given the council's interest in forwarding regional collaboration around housing and not being the only party at the table who is working on this in the way Aspen has been working on this, it has been really good to have all those parties at the table, and recently including rifle and parachute.
So if we, if we had notes or changes, then do those other communities have to be asked to sort of re-adopt the changed version, they do?
Right, and.
Okay.
And it would, it would be more challenging.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions, comments, suggestions?
Yeah, I had a lot of concerns, as I was reading through this, I, I think Torrey said it well, that it's, it's not baked, so I have apprehensions about giving eighty thousand dollars or more to start up a nonprofit, I, I was thinking as we're going, as I was going through this, could we, could we pledge that if everybody else goes in, that we'll go in, but these are all things that, that we've been working on with RET, RET funds and our housing funds, haven't gotten a lot of cooperation from the rest of the valley, as, as I can see, and as Rachel has brought to our attention a, a number of times, so I, I know that it's important to have a regional approach to this, but I do have, I have something in the back of my head saying, well, there are no governing documents, if we approve expenditures in the interim and tell there are governing documents, that all of the members have to approve the expenditures, which is, is next to impossible, I think, it's just, it's a big burden to get expenditures approved by a number of different bodies, and you said that there were a couple of more that signed on, that I was counting eight in the memo.
Good question, so this went before Glenwood Springs last Thursday, Picken County earlier today, tonight, with Salt will also consider it as well as Carbondale tomorrow, Garfield County Housing Authority will consider it, which is also, they are, their housing authority in the B O C C are the same member, and, I'm sorry, I've got Carbondale here twice, I don't think that's correct, I think we're missing somebody.
Good for her.
Eagle County, sorry, Eagle County is part, party to this as well, how many do we have?
I'm up to seven.
Okay, let me go through here, Eagle County Housing, Picken, they, because of when they came to the table, they did not want to, oh, Snowmass Village, they did not want to jump in right away, they are on board with the concept, they need a little bit more time for ripeness, and because there has been so much momentum behind this, the, the original parties wanted to continue forward with it, thank you.
Yeah, I'm certainly appreciative of the, of the goals here, and this council does have housing and always has had housing at the top of our list and concerns and funding. I haven't heard anything from this group since their, their housing study a few years ago, and I, now, Diane, you've been going to meetings that I was unaware of, I didn't know that they were still an active functioning body, but my, my concerns are that we're, we're putting in a lot of money for something that isn't, hasn't progressed very far, so I'm interested in how the rest of the council is on it, but I, I do have some reservations about this, and I do, I'm very appreciative of the time that you've put in on this, Diane, and if, if this doesn't pan out, like, we've done land bank, banking, and, you know, our workforce housing funds and RET funds have all gone towards all of this, and we're actively adding subsidized housing, so I do have apprehensions, I need some assurance from the rest of the council to, to get me there.
And a point of clarification, you referenced eighty thousand dollars, that is ten thousand from each jurisdiction in aggregate, so the ask of the city is ten thousand at this time, okay. Comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, I, I do support this, I think this is something we've been talking about, collaborating with the other groups involved, and I know staff spent time on this, and if they think we should support going forward with this, I support that.
Thanks, Joan. Skippy, and then Rachel?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm super supportive of moving forward with regional housing coordination, I think this is the first step, I don't expect the first step to be the tenth step, and so generally, I'm, I'm really supportive, I'm glad we're taking this direction, if the other communities haven't showed up, it's awesome that they're showing up now, and, you know, I kind of think of this like, almost like the, the climate change talk on the global scale, it's like, well, China doesn't want to play in the Paris Accords, even though they're the biggest polluter, right, and it's like, well, we're the sort of biggest economic engine in the valley, like, we, we have to take steps as part of this. That said, while there's nothing I disagreed with in the letter, there are a couple of things that I thought were maybe omitted, and maybe those just come later, so I want to hear from you guys, but just for, for conversation, the things that I thought were omitted in this were the nexus or the intersection between transportation, environment, and housing, there's no mention of that, we can solve housing, but if we're all going to different places in the valley, we're, we're kind of harming some of our other issues, so I think that some call out of that is really important, I appreciated the focus on data by mentioning the twenty nineteen study, but I'm concerned about calling out just one study that is sort of in some ways already out of date, just because of how much change there's been, and so maybe more open language, just about using the best data available to us, and it could say including, but I thought that was, that was one, and then last, and I understand why it's very government-focused, but this is a problem that's only going to be solved with businesses, citizens, and workers too, so I thought some language about being a convening body for businesses and citizens throughout the valley was important, those, those are my kind of three notes for consideration, but I'm very supportive of, of what we're doing here.
May I address two of those, just because they're, they're good points to bring up, and I, there are things I haven't mentioned, on the data side, the, what DOLA has contributed is actually its in-kind, and we have some fabulous and very talented analysts who are working on the Roaring Fork Roadmap process, who are updating the twenty nineteen data, and we actually brought into the discussion Rachel's point about median income, and we had a long discussion with them about the importance of looking at pay and, and, and looking at the jobs and the census and how the jobs have become lower paying overall in the past ten years, so the, the state folks are absolutely looking at that in that updated data, the other piece I did want to mention, and I didn't put this in the report, so I'm glad you brought it up, the, part of the advantage of a nonprofit is that the, there were nonprofits who were very interested in, in being at the table for this, and also, we looked at this, if you've got a nonprofit, it's an easier way to invite for-profits to the table.
Rachel?
Yeah, please.
I guess I am riding a fence on this one, can I get a? Can I just leave it on and sneeze?
I leave mine on.
I don't like the new mics. Sorry, just being honest, I'm, I'm a little on the fence on this pretty clearly, you know, I, I can see both sides, the, the desire to get it going, the many obstacles and hurdles it will have to overcome, and I really can only think of the Regional Transportation Authority as being the first, RFTA, you know, and that started as Aspen only, then there was a vote to make it Picken County that replaced one tax with the other tax, so they all were in, then we kind of started having agreements with other people like Snowmass, and then eventually, when we started going for the Regional Transportation Authority, it took two different efforts, the first effort was probably three or four hundred thousand through RFTA, took two years, and it just kind of fell apart, it wasn't really there, and then we restarted it in the year two thousand, and it took, but, you know, you, you really were dealing with slowly opening eyes or changing eyes to the, to the situation, and Aspen sent free buses, Aspen, Picken County sent free buses through Glenwood for a period of time, just so they could see what the transit was like, and it worked, but, you know, the, the big opposition was, you're just going to be stealing our workers, and, and the answer was, well, we're, they're all gonna be bringing home big paychecks on Friday, that will help your local economy, so it balanced out, but this, this is an effort that is going to take a lot of equalization among bodies, and, and that's been the hurdle so far, of what if one community has a ten percent mitigation rate for new commercial growth, another community has sixty percent, one community has a real estate transfer tax that can generate very significant funds, and no other communities are allowed by state law to get those, one, yeah, well, that's a tough vote, to change the state constitution and ask every property tax owner to do that, you know, so there starts to be real questions of how do you settle the equities between things, and proximity to work, you know, I, I've used this example before, but it's likely that Burlingame Three, and maybe eventually the lumberyard, will be some of the least expensive housing in the valley, but I don't think we're building it for people to cross-commute down valley to Carbondale, and so if there was a regional housing authority, how do they deal with this proximity to work question versus everyone applying for whatever unit comes up, even if it's forty miles from their home, that's similar to your environmental question, but there really needs to be zoning concurrency as well, I mean, it's not just mitigation levels, but if we're all out there trying to landbank and build units for this regional housing need, and meanwhile, one community or another is approving another batch. And that's where I want to get to, is that it's very important that this effort, this program that is undertaken, isn't just a build-to-solve-housing problem. It's got to be the comprehensive. It's got to be the non-build solutions. It's got to be the policy zoning solutions. It's got to be a lot of things. What I'm reading from this is just people saying, we've got to find more money and you've just got to build more. But it's not about, we've got to look at what we're doing with our unused land throughout the valley. What is that empty land going to be? Is it going to be demanding jobs, or is it going to be housing people? And so I could see this as many, many, multiple years of work to iron out those things before a single housing stick gets built. And those are the things that have to be worked out. But again, I would say, similar to the R T A, we do not want, I will not put Aspen in a position where we're part of a minority vote of a group of eight people, and the eight entities can vote to say, hey, to heck with that proximity-to-work thing, your housing is now our housing. And what happens to the already-built housing? To join, you have to donate it in, the way that City of Aspen donated all of its bus facility at the Airport Business Center, and its buses, and everything to R A F T A to complete that transition to an R T A. So there's just a lot, a lot of questions. That doesn't mean it shouldn't be attempted, and it shouldn't be started, but it gets back to the question Sarah was asking and others, of how much staff time and what is the commitment of staff time from others? Because it is a multi-multi-year process. And if you were really going to hire someone to look at, figure out how you're going to sort these things out, or which ones can be resolved or not, that's probably hundreds of thousands. And then the potential of a unifying tax or funding measure for this entity, valley-wide vote, that again, you start, it has to be so much public outreach, so much public discussion. Like, I'm just trying to use that R A F T A comparison. And so I am supportive of this moving forward. It's nothing I'm going to just jump right into. I am willing to spend 10,000 to get it going, and to think about how much time. But I think that the participants and these other governments are potentially smaller governments with less staff time available, even though we know we're already pushing our staffs to the limit. So I mean, I think that the group has to think about what sort of schedule it will realistically take and how to do it without collapsing under its own weight of people who just can't make one a month meeting for the next three years. And that's the type of magnitude, or once every six weeks, it will take to start identifying and hashing out these issues and seeing if communities really want to participate. Because some communities still want to grow 100% more second homes and economy of that, as opposed to housing the workers, and then the social service issues that come to a county or a community or region or town from, hey, we're going to house all the low-income workers. How are we going to work with our food stamp program? How are we going to work with childcare? How do we take all the social problems that come from low-income housing? Where? So that's my long speech. Thank you.
When's your next meeting with this group?
Later this week.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Is it okay if I address a couple of these?
Please.
If you'd like to.
Just because they're good topics for council consideration that aren't included in here? And one of them is the equity piece. And, you know, Sarah gave me a heads-up early in this process and said, hey, you know, this needs to be fair to Aspen. And that's one of the evolutions of what was a prior, it was going to be set up as a regional housing authority, and now it's not, right? Because I don't think there's any intent for the city and App Chita step in and offer up housing. One of the things about the timing on this that maybe I should just emphasize is that because of the state funding that's coming up, that's one of the, that's part of the impetus and was part of the motivation to keep the group going. I forgot to mention that the DOLA folks who are helping us on the Roaring Fork Roadmap are actually creating a toolbox that is not just a build solution. Now, Rachel, you're absolutely right, right? If there's money that comes down, this group wants to move quickly and not do a bunch of studies, but get DOLA to update the data for us and then be able to move. However, that toolbox is definitely something that they're putting together, and they are already using the, your strategic, your draft strategic plan. Absolutely agree with you on zoning concurrency and unifying tax authority will be a big deal. And on staff time, Sarah's been great with me on helping me to manage time. And what I think is really fortunate is that the folks who are the drivers of this process are really the executive directors of the local housing authorities. So you've got a team of folks in there who have a depth of knowledge that I hope to have someday. So they've been, so for example, when it comes to drafting this or doing the heavy lifting, they've been really taking the lead on that, and I'll come in and review stuff and offer comments. Thank you.
Just to respond to that, in my mind, this gets up and gets going, it gets DOLA money, that's great, does some land banking, and we're a part of it, just like seven other partners at some level. And the housing they create is good for anyone who is qualified and works that job, and, you know, anywhere in the whole region that has now contributed. But I don't think anybody's talking about throwing their existing housing assets into it, or committing any of their existing revenue streams to it. And I think that's the important part for people to realize. Thank you.
John?
And I'm also, you know, excited that it's moving in a timely fashion, so we can take advantage of these ARPA funds while they're available. I just learned this, everybody in the room probably knows this, but every city, every one of these eight jurisdictions are eligible for ARPA funds.
Yeah. I think through the state, they're coming up with some divvying out policies, but as opposed to each one getting an allotment like we did before, but I could be wrong. Thank you. I support this. Do we need a motion? Mike?
Tori, did you, you kind of raised the concerns, I was wondering if you had any that we haven't talked about?
No, I just wanted to spur on that conversation briefly, so that we could really make sure that we get this out on the table and talk about this. Like I said, at first blush, this is a no-brainer, and it's like, boom. But I just want to make sure that everybody, like your input on the letter, and these two that's saying, hey, I got some questions about, you know? So I just wanted to make sure that we had that conversation before we do this.
Yeah, I have concerns about how long it's going to take to get governing documents in order. How long is it going to be before we have an entity that can actually apply to the state for funds?
We've got a physical agent.
Are there any projects that are fundable? I'm really concerned on how long it's going to take. My other concern is, I want buy-in from all the other entities as well. If, I would personally put my approval on condition that everybody else that is listed on this will also be actively engaged in it.
So council, I...
Council, I know, I need to just leave it on. I was worried she'd hear me typing. My read of this is that you, as a governing body, have the upper hand. Your commitment to this exploration is new territory for the way for us to do business, right? And I think 10,000 is a low cost of entry for that experimentation. That is completely within your control. But it means we are not going to have answers to some of these questions, sometimes for a long time.
Right.
And that's really where we're asking you about, is this worth that exploratory phase? This is just a letter of intent. It absolutely will later require an I G A between all of the parties if we become bigger funders and getting a nonprofit started. And there's a lot of questions about what does that nonprofit board, what is their mission, who sits on it, how are the different communities and nonprofits and other key stakeholders in the region in this conversation are represented in that work? And I think this is actually a really great opportunity for the region.
Yeah.
You know, R A F T A has, is actually the only other example I know of here on the Western Slope of this level of cooperation. And it's taken a long time to get there. And so we need to start somewhere, even if we can't answer all your questions. So what I take from tonight's conversation is that you'll vote, and they'll give us direction, whether to sign the letter of intent or not. But the second piece I'm hearing is that we're not leading. We are at the table, we're contributing, but we want to see some leadership from some of our other local government entities in this conversation, so that, one, we know their voices are heard, and, two, that the workload is shared. And if I'm misinterpreting of any of that, so that I can give Diane clear direction, please let me know. And I'm going to turn it over to make sure if Diane has any other questions about that, we get that clarified before your vote.
No, that's a great clarification. Thank you. And I will, towards point, your point is a good one on timing. Dave Myler is volunteering himself in his work. He's actually now already started work on the 501(c)(3) status, and his intention, and the group's intention is to move quickly on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just a comment. I met with David at the first sign of this group, way before the housing study. And at that time, he thought he was going to have a shovel on the ground in about four months. So this stuff takes a very long time, and I really, $10,000 is not a lot of money. We are all supportive of these goals, but I have a lot of concerns. And like you said, I want engagement from all of these other communities. And the R A F T A model is, I mean, that I think is the gold standard for regional cooperation. So for $10,000, I'll gamble with city's money.
Very good.
More?
Just sort of a final question, and I'll support this. I appreciate the conversation, and I totally agree with what you're saying. I mean, I think this is an awesome opportunity to have a co-creative experience. You know, this really wasn't possible 10 or 20 years ago, but the development of communities down valley and sort of, you know, the intrusion of some of these problems has brought them to the table, as evidenced by these meetings. And because each of our communities are different, we're going to bring different solutions to the table, which is actually quite exciting. So I think that's great, and all the things you guys have raised are exactly what we need to be talking about in this group. My follow-up question is just, you know, of the three points I raised, I think two of them will solve themselves, because they'll have to. The data point and the convening point, if they don't do that, the group won't be successful. But the nexus of transit, environment, and housing, you know, that to me is like a really critical piece that could just be ignored by this group and lead to some bad results. So if we move this forward as it is, how do we have confidence that we can forward that and get the group to consider that as we move forward?
I can actually say I'm new enough to the valley that I don't know actually what the politics are in the valley around carbon reduction. Transportation, no question whatsoever.
Well, we can just call it that, because it's the same thing.
Thanks.
I think the group will be very receptive to it, and I think more than anything, they're going to look at it and go like, oh, yeah, let's add that.
Cool.
Yeah.
Probably.
I think so.
And I'm very supportive. And thank you. This is great.
And we can provide you a separate update, unless Philip is comfortable doing it right now. We were actually engaged with the University of Utah and the University of Southern Florida. Now, he's telling me, no, don't do this tonight. Who've requested us a system being a case study on affordable housing and T D M combined. And so we have been entertaining that request and, you know, also saying, how much of our time are you actually asking for to do this? And they view it as a valley. It is also, some of the researchers interested in doing that are quite reputable for doing the work and have quite a bit of familiarity with the valley. So I think there's, I'm getting at, there's some other means perhaps to address your inquiry.
Yeah. Good.
Alan, I couldn't say that.
All right.
Microphone?
Maybe I want that on the record.
All right, with that discussion, I would take a motion to accept the proposal and sign the letter, sign onto the letter of intent and approve...
Allocate the money.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of intent for a regional housing nonprofit and allocate $10,000 towards its creation.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second further discussion. Seeing none, could we have a roll-call vote for the proposal to create a regional housing coalition and sign the letter and make our contribution?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Ken.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Merritt Torrey?
Yes. All right, thank you. Thank you, guys. I just wanted to make sure that we had that full conversation.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Not just pass it.
Very good.
This brings us down to resolution number 21, policy resolution for Building IQ. Uh-huh. It's got the coolest name of all the things that we work on.
The smartest building program in all of the land. Has an EQ too, we're told.
Exactly. Hello, counsel?
Hello.
I'm going to set up and share my screen.
Just going to run to the restroom, but you keep going.
Sure.
Hey, Scott.
It's freezing.
Hey, Scott.
Look at Michelle sitting there.
Is it possible to like, turn up the heat? Two degrees or something?
Yeah. I was going to say, you've got three people up here, having taken their coats off. I've got my blanket. Nicole looks like she's dying over there.
I'm like an ice cube at this point.
I've got my coat behind me.
I'm wearing more underwear.
That's what you have to do.
Upward skin.
More information than needed.
TMI, TMI. We can go ahead and get started when you're ready.
Sure.
Skippy will be back in just a moment.
Yeah, sounds good. I've been told I have to sit six inches away from this, so I want to make sure.
No, six inches close to it.
Oh, okay. There we go.
Out of the way.
Awesome. Well, good evening, counsel. My name is Tessa Schreiner. I'm the Sustainability Programs Administrator, and I'm here to give you a brief presentation this evening on the policy resolution for Building IQ. So in December, during the Building IQ work session, council directed staff to come back with a policy resolution to, as a next step in the Building IQ process. And so today's intent is to get high-level direction from council to move forward with next steps on the Building IQ process and program. So my focus this evening will not be on policy and program details. In fact, if approved, this policy resolution directs staff to come back with those details for council discussion as part of the first reading of the ordinance. And so this policy resolution is in support of amendments to the Buildings and Building Regulation Code. It includes two main components or phases, which should be familiar to you. Phase one of energy and water benchmarking, and phase two of building performance standard. We've also added on these titles of data tracking for phase one, and carbon reduction is another way to think of these different phases. So I'll start with a very high-level what and why of Building IQ, beginning with the why. So as you all know very well, council set in 2021 a goal, a carbon goal, to take meaningful action and provide leadership to reduce the community's greenhouse gas emissions. In addition, earlier this year, council set new science-based targets to reduce our community's emissions by 63% by 2030, and zero carbon by 2050. And Building IQ and the built environment were two big components of a pathway to reach that goal and those targets. In addition, Building IQ is in alignment with the recommendations of the Climate Action Plan. And then last, but certainly not least, and you'll see in your packet this evening for the info-only memo, an updated G H G inventory for the year, excuse me, 2020. And that, these findings are what you see on the screen. So this shows what we already knew, which is that buildings account for more than half of our community's greenhouse gas emissions, 57% in the 2020 inventory, which is just a 1% change from the 2017 inventory. This only reaffirms the need to act in the building sector, and that action within the building sector to reduce emissions will have a really big impact on the community's greenhouse gas emissions as a whole. So pivoting now to more of the what of Building IQ, again, at a pretty high level. So Building IQ addresses existing buildings through benchmarking and building performance standard. It partners with property owners to achieve shared goals. So those goals are to reduce consumption and realize savings, which is a goal of theirs and a goal of ours. In addition, Building IQ creates a pathway to reach council's carbon... are to reduce consumption and realize savings, which is a goal of theirs and a goal of ours. In addition, building IQ creates a pathway to reach council's carbon goals. Staff does not believe that without building IQ, there isn't alternate pathway to reach the goals that council has set for community greenhouse gas emission reduction. And then finally, building IQ provides us, the, the city with really useful data to improve our programs and service delivery across multiple departments. So this building IQ policy resolution has two main components, as you know, benchmarking and building performance standard, which I'll talk about briefly. And then it also sets next steps in this process for the building IQ ordinance. So benchmarking or phase one, the data tracking phase, requires property owners to track energy and water usage over time and report it to the City of Aspen. It creates a consistent process for tracking and analysis by using the same tool across the board and also to ensure that we're comparing apples to apples. And then lastly, it builds customer service capacity to, for property owner's support to ensure that we're really supporting property owners in the process. Second phase of this is a building performance standard, which requires property owners to meet and establish standard over time. It directs staff led by community stakeholders to develop specific standards and to come back with those in the form of guidelines for council's consideration and adoption. It's important to note, I will say on this section, that we cannot fully pivot to the building performance standard requiring that of property owners without a funding source and without providing funding and support for property owners. The goal of this is to create a program that leverages local and federal dollars to create really tailored support for these property owners to ensure that what we're asking of them is supported and backed by the city and that we can really help them and handhold through that process. So building IQ is a really impactful and important program, and it may seem like a lot. So I just wanted to summarize in these three key takeaways from this. The first is that this is a long timeline. And it begins, of course, with benchmarking, which is rolled out incrementally over time, over a few years. And then eventually will include a building performance standard, but that is, if that's, if not a few, then several years out. So we're looking at quite a long timeline and process that still reaches our goals, but isn't asking anything of really big of building owners, you know, immediately on a dime. That brings me to the property owner's support. So before we ask property owners to reach a performance standard or to make improvements of the building, to their building, we would have a very robust property owner's support system that would include both technical support through core and funding support that the City of Aspen will identify either through local funding sources or, again, leveraging federal or state funding sources. And then finally, as I mentioned before, building IQ achieves shared goals. So our property owners in our community in Aspen want to reduce consumption. They want to realize savings, and that is also what we want. And this partners on achieving that. In addition, it's in the best interest of the community and property owners here for us to achieve our carbon goals, to reach a sustainable future. So our next steps, should council approve this policy resolution, it would direct staff to bring back the first reading of a building IQ ordinance to council. The proposed schedule for that would be a first reading March 22nd and a second reading on April 12th. If the ordinance is adopted, we would begin benchmarking support immediately on the staff side and with core. And we would create a stakeholder group for building performance standards development, among other things, but those would be our immediate actions. So that is it. In summary, staff recommends that council approve this policy resolution for building IQ.
Thanks, Tessa. All right. I want to start with Rachel.
Great. Thank you, Tori.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. Thank you for this great work. I'm highly supportive. I think it is the first step of a thousand miles, as they say. And so there's not much to say about the policy resolution, per se, for myself. But I, I do want to make the point, as you said, that this is about meeting standards over time. And those standards have not even been finalized yet. They will be developed cooperatively and realistically as we go forward. What it kind of reminds me a little bit of is when we used to have vehicle emissions testings, and they still do in the front range and other areas. And there was always a provision that if, if you, if you couldn't get your older car to hit the new emission standards, you had to expend up to $500 or at least $500 to get it to run as good as possible, and then you passed. And that was kind of the rule. So there was this thing made out to the side, you know? And I think we may run into that as people bring some of their buildings closer and closer. And so I just wanted to say, I, I know we're not going to be able to get every building down to net zero. And that, that is part of what happens when buildings are demolished and rebuilt, is you get a better product, just like they're bringing better planes into the airport with less carbon as that changes. But what I, I wanted to kind of comment was more, I, I do agree with the trying to find and bring funding, and I think it's very likely that there will be funding. But I, I don't think that this will be successful if it only hinges on government money from here on out, you know? I mean, it just, there's too many buildings, and there'll be so much competition between commercial and residential. And are you spending it on one that's going to get torn down in three years anyhow? Or what, is it still actually going to stand for another 30? But what, it really reminded me of was the PACE programs that we actually had passed here, the property assessed, and how to be able to employ that to whatever extent it remains, or if there, there needs to be a renewal of that, I think it was residential PACE that we passed in the county before. So, and there's a commercial component that's remaining. But that might be a, a key to increasing that availability or, or the ease of which people can get into those programs. And then I think, guess it was called performance contracting, was something that was quite big back in the day, where they would look at your building and look at your current bill, so you'd have to be benchmarked. And then the contractor themselves would be able to say, hey, this job's going to cost you $30,000, but with our company, you will be paying for it from your reduced energy bills. And they would make a commitment as to how low they would reduce your energy bills before you sign on to it. So I guess what I'm saying is I'd like to make sure when we get to those phases, we have done as much as we can to flesh out and to have available and ease of entry additional programs to bring in the resources to make the changes as we perceive them and as they're available. Otherwise, I think this is a great step forward, and I thank your department entirely for, for working on this.
Thank you.
John?
I just have a couple of questions. I was asked these earlier today, and I thought I might have the answer for one, but anyway. My first question was, why is the City of Aspen Electric and Water unable to do this without, without the resolution? And I think I know the answer is privacy concerns.
Yes. Yeah, privacy and ownership as well on the, on the building owner's part for best management practices and comparing apples to apples within the federal portfolio manager tool.
And the other question was, is, is this going to be required of all the buildings that the City of Aspen is in charge of? And I want to answer yes to that, but I didn't know the answer for sure.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
More? Yeah, I've been in favor of this since it came before council two years ago.
No.
But I, I, this is, for me, it's very inspiring, and it made me dig back into a quote from John Kennedy, 12, 9/12/62 at Rice University.
Good day.
"We choose to go to the moon, we choose to go to the moon in this decade and do other things, not because it's easy, but because they are hard. Because the goal we serve to organize and measure the best of our energies and skills. Because the challenge is one that we're willing to accept, one we're unwilling to postpone, and one we intend to win, and the others too." It's a lot of work to do, but we have to take it up. And John Kennedy said it better than I ever could.
Thank you.
Comments? We made it to the moon.
Is that your comment?
Thank you.
I only have one question. What are the communities that we are looking at that are maybe into phase two? I know as we were departing on this journey, that we were talking about places that had been benchmarking and the like, but I didn't really recall next-phase examples for us. Are there some? And what are just maybe two or three of the communities that have a program similar that we look to for learning?
Sure. Yeah. Well, we don't have to look too far because Denver and the state of Colorado are implementing building performance standards. Denver passed theirs in late 2021, and Colorado is in the rulemaking phase right now. So they haven't set their standards but have passed that policy. Other communities include St. Louis, DC, Boston, Tula Vista, California, and New York.
Thank you.
Yep.
This is a resolution for policy resolution building IQ. If there's no more further questions, I could take a motion.
I propose we approve resolution-
Twenty-one?
Number 21, series of 2022, policy resolution building IQ.
I'd like to second that.
Yep. Sounds good. We have a motion. A second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote for resolution 21, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Tori?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Thanks, Tessa.
Thank you, guys.
Jim?
Jimothy.
Mr. Mayor, counsel. Staff is recommending that council go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section 2464024A, purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real personal or other property interest.
He's not going anywhere.
For, for B, conferences with an attorney for the local public body for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. And for E, determining positions relative to matters that are subject to the negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators. With regard to lease, transfer, or acquisition of real property or property interest, contract negotiations, communications with council regarding such subjects, due to market forces, negotiation strategy, and confidentiality demands of priorities involved and necessitated by the subject, the specific, of the specific legal advice which further the disclosure would be a detriment to the city's strategic position, the exact properties cannot be disclosed. Other items of discussion include the Centennial Homeowners Association, I'm sorry, Centennial Owners Association versus City of Aspen, case number 2015, CV 030158, and a brief update on, on the status of that case and aspects around it, as well as the Aspen Board of Realtors versus City of Aspen litigation, see, case number 2021, CV 30131. If council moves to go into executive session, the executive session will be recorded, and the recording will be maintained by the clerk for a period of not less than 90 days.
All right. I would move to go into exec, I would move to go into executive session based on the citations of our attorney.
I'll second.
Jim, in that language that you just did, maybe I just didn't hear you, but did you refer to the lease, transfer, acquisition?
I did.
Okay, thanks.
I did it kind of in a different order than-
Yeah, I thought so. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion for going into executive session, seeing?
The, the only discussion I would have is for the public, that we will not be coming back into session. We will not be taking any action after the executive session. But by not coming back to broad class, our formal closure, grassroots can go home rather than waiting for us for two hours for just one motion.
Two hours.
To, to close the meeting.
Two hours? She called it.
I don't like what you say.
She babe-rued us.
Thirty minutes.
All right. With that, could we have a roll call vote for going into executive session, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
I agree.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Tori?
Yes. Well, thank you guys very much. Thank you to grassroots.
Bye, y'all.
Everybody have a wonderful two-two-two-two-two.
But not too much.
So, should I need to stop?
Thank you, guys.
Oh, okay. No?
All right.
Oh, I thought we were discussing stuff. Okay. So I can just put this in?